This way we'll kick it off. Thanks. Middle of July. Thanks, great attendance.
Remember your audience. Remember your audience.
Thank you. Thanks everyone for coming. Just kicking this off, I think, are we up? Okay, cool. So we'll kick it off with with public input. Members of the public will be welcome to join. Welcome to comment during this public input. Period. You can comment either by coming up to the podium or raising your Zoom hand. We ask that you you keep your camera on if you are on Zoom. And that you follow school committee policy for public input, including speaking for no more than three minutes. And on topics under the purview of the school committee. So if there's any public input that you're there. That's a great.
I don't want to take credit.
May or April or June or September, we'd be there. Sorry, we will kick off the meeting. Seven oh eight.
Leo Brown here.
Shell Kirkby here. Kristen Seven Eighty here.
Will Horn here tonight here.
Yes, I think.
So if there's any kind of think about public input. Anyone in the room?
I don't see a Zoom hand, but we just have a question of will you unmute soon? So. People in Zoom land can't hear us, you can.
Okay, with that, no, no public input. So why don't we start off with new business? And I think why many folks from school are here. Dr. Morrison's got a presentation on a strategic plan. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Michael has it up for us. I do want to recognize the members of the strategic plan. Steering committee that are in tennis tonight. They worked real hard on this process. I know that. We had meetings of, I think, eighteen hours total, but there was a lot of work outside of this that went through as well. So I just really appreciate the time and dedication. That they have to our district and our students to to put this document together that hopefully you will approve tonight after the presentation. Next slide, Mike. There's a members of maybe twenty six members of our steering committee. So we had students, we had teachers, we had administrators, we had parents, and you know, I think that at one point we had talked about. You know how were parents chosen in this process? So during this process, what we did. Was I asked the principals to forward me names of folks that were either on the school site council or on PTO leadership. And then I reached out to those individuals and then the folks that could actually. Commit to the eighteen hours of meetings and the work outside of that were chosen to do that. We felt it was really important. To get parents that were already engaged in what we're doing as a district and it seemed natural to have them. Come as part of this this process. So again, I just want to thank all the parents and everyone else that was that were part of the strategic plan steering committee. So strategic plan, you know, we we had one. Like six or seven years ago and then COVID hits, we're a little bit behind, but really it's something that you do every three to five years. In a school district and it's really a powerful tool that can assist the district in staying focused on their goals. And I think it's really important. This city out of Harvard writes that instead of actions an organization choose to pursue or achieve objectives. In deliberate actions or public pieces that fit together to create a clear picture. On how people activities and the resources in the organization can work effectively toward a collective purpose. That really gives us a. A good framework to operate on and how we we went about going through the strategic plan. So the process, Michael. Process that we use, and I know that this was part of the presentation when teaching learning alliance came to the committee months ago. The phase one was really building that foundation and getting the group together and then phase two with building the plan. And now we're entering the phase three, which is the implementation of plan. So our process in phase one, we looked at the relevant data representing the performance of the Medfield Public Schools. So we had a series of eleven different focus groups with parents, community members, school committee staff, leadership. So we had six extra. So teaching learning learning alliance, they usually do five and that's part of their contract. We we really, we talked to them about doing additional ones because we felt was really important to get. As much input as we could for the community and from our teachers. One of the lessons we learned last time is that we had our teacher. Our teacher. Feedback sessions. By invitation so that folks could make it, that was great, but if they couldn't, they just they wouldn't be there. So this time we did it as part of our. Faculty meeting in each district, each school. So it made a lot of sense to get everyone there involved and giving a lot of input. So that really went well for us. So much so, TLA has talked to us about really recommending that as a strategy for districts going forward. We did the survey to the community and to the staff and parents and we had over a thousand respondents to that. And then we looked at the Expost backhoe data, the public schools that we had, so test scores, anything else that we had. In the past that really kind of completed the picture of the district going forward. In phase two. We had, we established that steering committee. The strategic plan steering committee and we began that work looking at. The internal data that we had analyzed. So that was the work outside that took a lot of time for people and it really. Added on to the extra eighteen hours that we we asked them to be as part of the meetings. We looked at our our former strategic plan and just looked at what worked well and what didn't and you know, some of the issues there. And I think what we talked about, we talked about this to the committee as well, is that one of the things that we need to improve on in this one is reporting out to the community and to everyone. Of how well we're doing and what things we're working on and do it in a in a more systematic way within a case of whether it's. You know, a couple of times a year or three times a year so that everyone is on board. So I'm going to get to that at the end of the presentation, but we had some. Pretty good ideas what we might do with that. We also, you know, tried to really identify what the priorities were by looking at the theme. So a few things came up. And it was maybe, you know, three or four times it came up. That's not a theme. But if we started looking at the data and we started seeing things emerging on a constant basis, whether it was through the focus group that then you start again. As part of the survey data, you know, then you start to triangulate that data and say, okay, this is definitely a theme, right? This is something we got to focus on and something we need to put as a priority. So we identified those priorities and then looked at the strategies as well. And then I think one of the most meaningful part of this whole process. Was looking at our vision statement, our mission statement, our core values and really reestablishing that as a school district and having those. Unbelievable conversations that we had over a couple of meetings to get that done. And then we developed the theory of action, which I'll go into. And through the the process as well. And then phase three. You know, we looked at how the how would be implemented and how we'd guide that process. We we looked at. You know. You guys over there, pay attention. We looked at the mechanism for, so how are we going to present that to the community? We wanted to make sure that we were able to present in a way a dashboard, so to speak, of where we were at each different item and how well we're doing. We thought that was really important piece. So then we we sent out the draft strategic plan to try to get feedback from the community and we did. And then we developed an FAQ document which we sent out to the entire group and the parents and teachers as well. And now we're in the process of collecting photos that we're going to put in the final draft of this, which will be done through a graphic artist, part as part of the contract with TLA. So just a couple of things still to do as part of this process is we need to have school committee approval of the draft. So we can move forward with that and then a letter for the school committee and a letter pretending that will be included in the plan. That goes into the graphic designer to do that. So that was the three things we need to do prior to getting it all straightened out. So as I said before, some of the really important conversations that we have, you know, looking at our core values and that core value is the vision, mission, all connected. So those core values kind of define the the foundation of our work and and I feel like the most important piece of this, of these core values drive the behavior of the adults in the organization. And one of my favorite quotes from Sergio Boni that talks about. Core values, one of the greatest norms is the response to the core values of the school ignored. When this happens, the response of the school leaders and the whole school community is one of outrage. If no one shows that falling short of the school's expectations bothers them, then by default, the school has lowest value. I think that's a really important piece that we talked about. At the first meeting, how important four values were and then once we got into the the actual developing of them with the group. That came up again, just a really important piece that that really drives that that behavior of our of our staff. So what we came up with as far as that process, which we feel really good about inclusivity, respect, responsibility, continuous growth. Those are the four key areas that we think are so important for our district that will drive what we do each day. And the continuous growth, we've had a lot of conversation around that because that does involve academics, right? It's not just continuous growth, academics or socially, but it really focuses on that excellence piece that. We, you know, we we value so much this community, continuous growth hit that. We just felt like that was a better way to express it. Instead of just putting academic excellence, which just deals with that piece, but not be the whole child as we focus on it in school district all the time. Our vision statement, you know, that aspirational description of what we want to do as a school district and it's it's kind of our North Star, our it's intended to be our our compass if we move forward. It's brief, but it's precise. So our our vision of embracing our time together to empower students to make a meaningful difference. And you know, we took, one of the things that we did during this process is try to decide what our theme was going to be of our strategic plan. And we had conversations and what's something that's in our community that we're proud of, that represents the community? And we talked about electric time, the company and the clocks that are all over the world that are built in Medfield. So time became what our theme is going to be and we felt like we wanted to harness that with embracing our time together. To empower students to make a meaningful difference, which is what we want at the end of the experience with kids. So our mission statement is we're going to drive our daily work and it's going to answer both following questions for us. What is it we do as a school district? What did our who did our district serve and what are the results that we want each day? So we spent a lot of time on this because you know, we've had a mission statement in the district for a long time and we looked at the revision of this. And we think we came up with an with an excellent mission statement that's going to drive our work each day. The Medfield Public Schools in partnership with families in the community, fostered a safe, inclusive and learning environment. Empowering our students to meet high standards, adapt to change and become responsible contributing members of society. So the last piece on this is the theory of action. This represents a set of actions that will be implemented in order to improve the organization, help it, help us reach our mission. Is obviously the theory of action is closely related to the priorities and strategies that we put together. So our theory of action, we will cultivate a safe, inclusive learning environment, empowering our students to meet high standards, adapt to change. And become responsible contributing individual by fostering safety, belonging and well-being for all. Offering high quality curriculum instruction, enhancing communication, creating partnerships between home, school and the community. And maximizing potential students, staff and families in the community to effective resource allocation. So as we went into the strategic plan, which I know you've seen, we looked at our structure and we wanted to try to highlight. The core focus for our improvement with these with these particular bullet points. So our priority is those overarching themes that came out. So we have the priorities listed, our strategy, those key areas that we're going to do, the key actions of how we're going to accomplish that. And then the evaluation indicators of how we're doing, the timeline on that, and then who's responsible for implementing those key actions. So as we went through the data and we went through this whole process, there were four priorities that emerged that are the cornerstone of what our strategic plan is about. Safety, belonging and well-being is our priority one. Priority two, community engagement, communication. Priority three, communication, excuse me, curriculum instruction and assessment. And four, finance facilities personnel. So as we got through to the. The safety, belonging, well-being, these are the key strategies of the district that we're going to be working on for the next five years. Evaluate current practices to support students, staff, all the. Promote sense of belonging for all students, families and staff. Align our current DEI belonging efforts. Examine school safety, uniformity, security, examine our social media impact. Implement restorative practices pre-K to twelve. And review school start times. We looked at our community engagement communications piece. Develop a comprehensive internal and external communication plan for pre-K twelve district community. Assistantly communicate our core values throughout the district. Develop a common aligned website. Strengthen homeschool connection. Build awareness about the availability of translation services and interpreters for school communication and events. And review and assess the use of surveys to Medfield Public Schools. In terms of curriculum instruction and assessment. Continually review our MPS curriculum for vertical and horizontal alignment. Identify timely professional development needs, review assessment, grading, reporting practices. Evaluate the current PK to twelve MTSS practices and establish pre-K PK to twelve MTSS support framework. Investigate and establish and align pre-k to twelve social emotional learning curriculum and streamline student transitions. Between raises. And lastly, our our fourth priority was this finance facilities and personnel. Develop a long-term sustainable budget strategies to address the district's needs. Reevaluate our five-year capital plan, collaborate with the town to establish revenue streams. And develop a long-term sustainability tech, sustainable technology strategies to address the district's needs. So as I said earlier, we did put it out for public comment and we got some feedback that. That we looked at and last week, Will Michelle and I met because Will Michelle were the representative of the school committee on the steering committee. And went through all the feedback and all the comments and we decided to make the following changes for the final document. Included glossary terms and I think sometimes when we in education, we start talking edro babble and we speak all the acronyms and this and that, but. The rest of the world doesn't use that language. So creating a glossary terms would make make it a lot easier for folks to understand as we go through the process. Include the school committee is responsible. We looked at key strategy two point one, four point one, four point two, four point three and four, four point four. School committee was not listed as people responsible in that and we thought that made sense to put that in those areas. And then in, we wanted to add a key action in number one point two. We wanted to utilize grades six to seven student voice. And we wanted to do that through either advisory period and or. Surveys that we do with those students and make sure that their voices are heard and that we had two great student representation representative on the steering committee. And want to make sure that that their voice was heard as part of that process and also increase that student voice for all of our kids six to twelve. And I know it's really small to see, but this is one of the areas of dashboards that we looked at. Reporting a progress in which you actually see the key, the key action and then would color code them so that someone could. If they're looking at the website, we're going to look at it and say, okay. We have a, we decide what the colors were, but if it were green is something that we're actively doing or something that's completed or if it were. Yellow is something that's still in progress, however we would do it, but just so it's a quick visual for people that can look at our plan. Look at what our key actions are under our priorities and see where we are in terms of completions. We thought that is something that's really important. And then our goal was to get that up this fall, so that we'll be able to just show folks right away where we're at, what we're working on right in the game. But I wanted to thank everyone again for being here tonight. And I know that folks put in a lot of time and effort to get this plan together. And I think I want to thank the people that did give us feedback and see, it's like the last time we did this. It worked out. We got we got some areas that we wanted to change on the plan as we had the draft. TLA had let us know that no one has ever done that in their experience, put out for public comments. So we just think that's. An important thing that we started last time and we want to continue. And once again, you know, really good ideas, it's changing that came out of that. So I want to thank those folks that that did that as well. Happy to answer any questions and. If I can't answer them. There are a lot of folks here that could do this well.
I have a few, but I maybe I'll jump right in. I'll start at the very, my first question, which is more of the top level question, which is. The priorities that have been presented before. And the strategies within them. Are those to be read in priority order?
That's a that's a great question. So I know, I think that. Based on the feedback that we got, I think some people absolutely read them in priority order. Meaning that we're prioritizing the belonging or we're saying curriculum instruction and I don't, I don't think so. See what. We felt was important to call them priorities because that was our focus area. Other districts that work with TLA have called them pillars. So if it was pillars, it'd be no issue, right? And it's all the same, right? But because we we use the term priority, we did, we did feel like it was important. To have the belonging piece, number one, even though we're not looking at those as this is the top priority and this is the fourth priority. But we did feel like it was important to have, because if you don't have belonging in the school district and that's staff and kids, you're not going to have anything else. There's no learning going on and kids don't feel comfortable and you know, ready to learn. So. We felt that was an important piece and the safety part was important. If the kids aren't safe in the school, there's no learning going on. So that we we did do that, but I wouldn't say I'd look at those and say that number four is fourth on our list in terms of importance. They're equal importance across the board.
And work will be being done across all of them.
Right. So it's not going to be in two thousand twenty seven, we're going to start priority four. That's not, it's not going to do that. We're going to be working on all of our processes.
I think I can see your point that we can't have continuous growth without the previous grant. We can't have one build on the other.
I think I appreciate that you called out the spirit of continuous growth because. In my first read and then in in seeing some of the FAQs that were presented. And understanding community. Feelings on the matter. I think the importance of the academic excellence. And the importance of the quality of the education itself, which all of this ties to. But I think it's it's important that it's said and identified that that is always. Not not only is it always part of it, but it is also specifically represented in some of these. Strategies, because I I do think it's just important for the community to feel like. That's that there, it's of course of the utmost importance and it is a focus for us to continue to drive academic excellence. So I think it's important to make sure that's.
We had our meeting last week, Will Michelle said, yeah, who I think is a great idea is that when the school committee does their letter that they're really explicit about that and I was. I would be explicit about that too, as part of my letter that goes to the plan that this is. You know, academic excellence is at the cornerstone of what we're doing here. We're just not saying that. And we're looking at it more holistically in terms of the whole child. So that continuous growth is not just academics, but it's developing the whole child.
Related, okay, I think I know the answer, but if I'm not mistaken too, even the. About your theory of action. Thought you had an offer and high quality curriculum and instruction. The the sequencing of it shifted. Sorry, I didn't mean to hear that. Like the, or did the order shift a little? Like there's a similar question. I think I know the answer, but I.
Yeah, I don't think, you know, it's just more. I I don't think it's locked up that it has to be in that order or priority. That's not what we're saying. It's just we listed them out that way and that's. A little bit, maybe a little bit different than the order. As it showed up in the actual plan, but I think the meeting is for.
Yeah, no, and I also, I mean, I even if it did, I I saw that as also. Some of the feedback saying, hey, what about academic excellence? I look at it and. Thinking the way you, even the theory of action, safety, belonging and well-being for all, we don't have that.
That sets the table very, right?
But I I just, I I noticed that when in my notes, it was a maybe it came up, I understand it. I mean, they're all in July.
Jeff, some of the key actions. Some of them I read and said. Don't we already do that? And I I wonder if. In some cases that is true and it's just a matter of doubling down on it and or prioritizing it more. Or are these all net new for us as far as key actions, like some of the.
But or it's just to expand on it. You know, as you said, double down, but I think it's really. There are things that we we do every day and some things that we're working on that were in the beginning phase, but now we need to complete it. That's what we'll be doing the next four or five years.
There was one particular, I'm just going to keep track. There was one particular one that I just didn't. Know any about as far as a key action. So maybe someone just reviews special education staff proposal. Made by the Medfield Teachers Association. I'm not familiar with that proposal, so I should go with that one.
So as part of the last collective bargaining agreement, one of the side agreements that we did was that we form a special education subcommittee with the union. And they would be led by good members of the association and then members of of leadership. And they met for four to five, six months this past year. They came out with recommendations on what to put to do in special education. I don't think it's going to be a surprise to let you know that most was around hiring more staff. I think that's what we need to look at. And by the time we got it, the budget was already set for FY twenty four. So we're going to use that document as far as a part of the next fiscal year. And I'm sure you'll be going to see some additional special education staff in the budget next year based on the right foundation that came out of that working group.
Thank you. I think one thing that. I I believe the way it's stated is the right way to state it, but I just want to sort of reemphasize it in terms of the safety and the belonging, well-being. And the promote sense of belonging for all students. And I think one of the things that. We do here is ensuring that as a community, we are thinking about. All levels of diversity and all of the things that make us different and that it's, you know, there might be some. Some things that are more front and center, you know, nationally or globally or whatever, but when we're thinking about. Belonging, it's for every, we want to make sure. Every kid, you know, whether it's, you know, if it's a physical thing, if it's a gender, if it's, if it's. A disability, if it's simply a behavior or a preference or, you know. Personality that that we're sort of embracing all of the differences in the children and. What we're focused on is really that that teaching the empathy and the respect that goes along with. You know, understanding people's differences. So I think that's implied by the language. I guess I just want to restate it.
In the process, so we.
And it's okay to restate things based on some of the feedback you heard for the public as well. I read through the FAQs. Reiterate the fact, I think the term DEI gets thrown around a little bit haphazardly, meaning being good at holding to meetings and everything. So with the idea of being inclusive of all, there's nothing new in education. There's nothing new to that.
Now, I, and Kristen, as you go through two, one, one thing that was new that I liked. I think when we talked a little while ago was the. The dashboard. Interchange, which I think is great. How are you thinking about? Like who updates, how how would be updated or how frequently?
So we're looking at a model that is being, was developed in another district and working with our tech folks to. Take a look at that and meet with the person that developed it and really model our dashboard after that one. So it would be something that I think we'd probably do in central office, we'd be updating it, you know, whatever it is. We got to figure out what the cadence would be to report out to, right? That's that's an important basis. It's going to be something we report out. Twice a year, three times a year, every meeting, like, you know, that's something that you guys want to. Should probably talk about and let me know what you want me to do on that, because I think that's an important piece too. Once it gets reported out and it probably changes in the dashboard, you know, so that those are working. On the step as part of the reporting out process, but.
I think the hard part of a dashboard is the reporting elements, right? What are the elements that you're reporting on, right? And how many of those are going to be in, are already in process, right? Are those going to shift to yellow right now? Not because they should, but what designates it to think the. Right, what's the rubric on it?
Right. I mean, I think Michelle and Will had talked to me about doing something where. I would do. Kind of a kickoff every September and what we're looking at, what are the big things we're looking at as part of the plan? And then do an update, you know, December, January, another update in May. With the committee and then we'll change the dashboard to do that.
Yes, we talked about having it as like an agenda item three times a year. But the responsibility of Jeff would be in the September timeframe, a recap of maybe what's been done and the goals that are set for the school year. A mid-school year. Evaluation on how things are going and then the end of the school year, did we meet the goals that were that were discussed? With the strategic plan in September. So that felt like that would be a good cadence because some of these. Some of these goals are going to take a long time and it felt like we were talking about in every meeting, are we just constantly saying like in progress, in progress and progress? Like it just. Felt like it'd be more meaningful and a better use of our time to state we're doing this and then understand where we are midpoint and then. Understand how we ended this year.
I think it'd be helpful to take the activities really. I think it'd be helpful to take the activities really and align them to the strategic areas, right? Now that way, as you're going about them, you're completing a timeline. I think it's only demo to donate a debt.
See, we don't know anybody there. You know that.
I, I, um, I'm glad. The response is that I, without asking, I was going to ask, but I, I think somewhere around twice a year is like appropriate, but it would be great at the beginning of the year. So I, hey, what. These are the focus areas. Um, I also think about if it were, you know, a midpoint, then really it is. A lot of that is highlighting my change, right? Right. And, and. Sometimes red in the dashboard is not a bad thing. Right. It's we attack, you know, this is what we went after. It's what we learned and this is what we need to do in order to. Like, and, and I, you know, I would like to think that that needs to be fully. But I, I, I think of that as also being a little bit of work. It is good. Process for us to think about a little bit. Because we should be always starting with that. I, I love, I love that, you know, maybe the dashboard idea. Other input to. Okay, now again, Michelle and Will.
I mean, Jeff and Michelle, so we thought that those are great checkpoints. I think the September kickoff come kind of summary of where we're at once we're a year and using this thing. And to kind of set the goals for, for the team for the year and then to check it. I, I think checking in more often than that kind of does it. A disservice, like you can't get these things done that fast. Um, but you know, we want to keep an eye on it, make sure we're, we're, you know, doing everything that we laid out to do and we work so hard to put together.
Yeah, I like, I like that. Uh, the other question too. So some of those things, we, I think it's maybe a reminder for us to like updating the mission and in some cases. Like I'm sure if, if approved, it would be posted. But you see it infusing into the website at all and places early.
So our plan is obviously a changed website, put all that out there. We're looking at getting, um, posters that length of the size, the one behind you for every classroom. That has our, our new mission statement, our vision statement, our core values listed. So that every classroom has it posted in there. So it's there all the time. So that's kind of what our goal is to get that done. In, I mean, in September in every classroom.
And on the website, it'll be like a, like a book, right? Like a link goes to it. I don't know if that's like clear how it is. It's, it's not like this. We're going to have to click through. Eighteen pages or thirty pages, we have. It's like, it'll be a, it'll, it's like reads like a book kind of the tech that, that TLA uses. So it'll be really easy to see. And navigate all of our, everything that's on it.
It's one point I was, cause as you and your team look to trickle down this messaging into their work. And I know that's a hard not to put you all on the spot.
I think that's, that's our conversation that let retreat in August that we're, we're talking a lot about that. How we can infuse that in what we do with building level, classroom level. Uh, as we kind of review what we're going to be doing, uh, as our focus area is for this year.
So that's the next steps that you, that you guys as a team are going to be taking these strategies and action items and starting to put some semblance of. Order around them and.
I think this is obviously important. I, I would like to just pause and see if there is any other, we, we, before we go, I mean, first off, I can ask. Is there other bigger topics, their conversation or, um, before we even think about a vote? Um, before you answer, I was thinking take public input if there is any. Cause there's been great dialogue if that brought anything up and, you know, this is very important for us. So comments and audience to, um. Yeah, but my own means there, there's a massive, massive thank you to the folks from school committee, um, Dr. Bart, I've spent. Administration, teachers, the community. Big, big amount of work. It's appreciated. But I, why don't we just see if there is any, is there any public input here? Or, uh, I assume.
If you want to make a comment on Zoom, please raise your hand. I'll bring you over to ask questions or make comments.
And in other words, I don't want to, you know, is everyone feel okay taking it to a load or anything of it? I'm good to vote.
Same. Yeah.
Last call on public comment, I think. Uh, okay, uh, is there a motion?
Motion to move the strategic plan as submitted by the superintendent and the steering committee.
Motion seconded.
All in favor? All opposed? Just okay, make sure it's. Yes.
Shocker, yes.
Leo Bram, yes.
Kristen Semenini, yes.
Will Horn, yes. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you guys.
Coming out as well.
They didn't want to stay for the rest of our business. Tonight.
Thank you. Um, okay, great. I feel, um, I, I know again. No, thank you. I feel, I feel great. And I know I'm sure the folks on the end.
It was a really, I mean, it was a really positive experience. And as I said at the last meeting, I felt. It was very helpful for like me as a committee member to get this. Rather more holistic view from the teachers and the faculty. We spent so much time with the community, but look at what it takes to really educate a child. There, there is even more people involved than just the community. So I thought it was really great to just get a deeper understanding of, um. You know, their thoughts, what they want to see going forward, their challenges and things of that nature. So I, I genuinely appreciate it. It sounds weird because those meetings were like long on paper, but they went really fast. Kudos to TLA for conducting.
And I do want to recognize, uh, Dr. Kim Boo, who was on the call and she's, might still be on the ball. Um, she was there for support for us tonight and she and Scott together did a wonderful job. You know, facilitating this work. So I just want to thank her as well. That's, that's great. Um, so the next topic on the agenda. So what I wanted to do, the workshop I thought we had on June twenty first, um, I thought was fantastic. Um, I, I know we covered a lot. Material and I think as, as, uh, the last topic, we revisited a couple of topics. So. I just wanted to kind of share one, the purpose of the workshop, um. You know, I, I think it's really important that we can talk. Once in a while and a little bit more of an open-ended fashion that doesn't always lead to a vote. Or in a direct action item, we know we're going to do it. It's, you know, what is the dialogue? How is, how are people reacting? Are responding? And I am thinking about it really combination of our, our strategic plan and. What, what I watch, you know, from you, right? That does set the priorities that helps set the agenda. So, so I, I just think, you know, one, if, if you came out of that. I appreciate that anytime in the middle of the summer, um, coming out for a full better part of a. Two thirds of the day is, is appreciated. Um, but I just, what I, so I thought on the major agenda topic, so it's just going to share. Kind of my takeaways from it and just, you know, general reaction. If I missed it. You don't feel like, hey, that was reflected, share it. If you're violent, agree with it, great. Or if you think, hey, this is really important, let me know. And I'll try to be, um, I will pause on each topic, but I'll try to be brief. Um, the first topic was, and for those on Zoom was with school safety. That was more covered in the executive session. I think it was really helpful just to kind of better understand how the pieces, uh, how it all fits together. Um, I, I thought one of them was not, you know, some of the factors that are outside of our control in order to get. Um, a dedicated SRO, um. You know, they, they need to be able to hire. And I think the only, the one thing we can do is amplify the need for that and support that, but that, that's a little bit outside our control. Um, I do think, you know, we talked so many. Different measures you can take, but sometimes walking the halls makes such a difference just in, in understanding the kids. Whatnot, but then, uh, one big takeaway, and I think it was maybe Michelle, but a few of us, what is the difference between? Um, the different terms that we use and creating, you know, fear, concerns and all. So a little bit more, um, education for the families. Around, you know, safety bill drills versus shelter in place versus lockdown. And these are the terms that you might hear. You know, when, when might you jump? I think that was one asked, maybe through a pen or a pen night or, you know, just some, somehow, but or, or the emails that go out. Was, was, that was the, for me, I think the, one of the bigger. Um, you know, takeaways and then if it's not in the student handbook, I think we also, that, that was another note that I, that I had taken out. Yeah. So, um, but I think that, that was my agent, just a little more of that communication, um, for, so we're all ready and preparing. You know, some more about alignment. I don't know if there was any. And, and it's okay if nothing else. You can also say, so, um.
But I think that's important. When there is an incident, if there is an incident, uh, the language that was not understood by the community causes a lot of panic. Among the community and kids. So any clarification we can do beforehand at a pin night or something, I think was really important for, you know. If that, if something happens, whatever, you know, whatever level it is from shelter in place to lockdown to whatever.
Yeah, it is even also, it's a good opportunity as a.
Yeah.
Reinforcing some of these little things. Like I remember at one point volunteering at. And there's a door open. Make a big, big difference. So I think that, that's great. Um, the second conversation was around, or, or is there? Was around, um, mobile phones and social media discussions. Um, but I took away was one. Leo, you would raise it, there may be, you know, I, I think we do a great job in general, Dr. Preston, is there any grants available? And if there's, um, ones that kind of qualify or, you know, on the lines that we're going, we should explore that.
As I say, I have a not, that would be, uh. Made arrangements, Dr. Marshall, to me, the administration to have that conversation, but I think it's something to, it's going to require a lot of input around. Solutions, you know, per grade level, whether, where it becomes a problem. And how they're dealing with it. And as you get to those five areas, how to address it. What is the idea of address? What else? Why is the why? It's not just cell phones, but it's what the cell phones give access to, the distraction they cause. Along with other things that may require the technology to be involved, you know, and, uh, in working with. Um, and, and bringing the students to the table, the why, right? So the, but I think that's the biggest. Takeaway that I wanted, I was hoping to communicate in that conversation and, uh. You know, I think it kind of came loud and clear, but as, as I've reminded when I was, um. Floating the idea or getting an opinion from a former colleague. Um, I just thought the role sometimes that technology plays for students, um, for. You know, noise cancellation, so that it's not distracting to them in, you know, on their way to school, maybe in the hallway. So there's. There's a balance that goes on with that. So I think finding that balance is what's going to be, you know, the, the work.
Yeah, I had, um, Leo wanted, I would love like the, the input you shared. I don't know, I guess informally, you know, could pick on a leadership role in that area.
Sure.
Um, cause like the bookends I had, um, you know, grants, I think something like that. And that's fantastic. The other one in this came up a little bit later and the key word here is explore. You know, PTO or schoolwide or community sponsored type committees.
Yeah, I think we should have one locally and then I, you know, I. We are midfield, so, uh, to increase our, um, opportunity to receive grant funds. I think it'd be helpful for us to partner with other districts. Um, and perhaps Dr. Martin uses his relationships and one of the collaboratives, uh, we have, uh, to. Voice some interest, see if there's any feedback interest from them. Uh, there is a new executive director of one and with an existing one of the other, and one of them may already have it on their radar. That up there. So that might be helpful. Um, assuming that those grant opportunities will be opening up fairly.
Yeah, they haven't opened up yet.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can mention it's all this couple of weeks ago that they're going to, and Desi can release them, but they haven't done anything about it.
Yeah. So I. I would think that that's something that's come up. Uh, I saw that session Jackie Ganzer from the state, I'm going to go as well. Who was saying that it's on their radar as well. They have been put in it. So, and she's the state tech director from close, the books of the technologies. So, um. So at any rate, that's, I think it's, I think we have to be strategically about it. I don't think it's. I'm going to drop a hammer and it's all going to get fixed, right? Like it's all raising awareness and I think parents would take an interest in it, you know, I think. Some of the comments I heard from my colleagues here about. The interest of parents too. So I think it needs to be a, a community effort and opposed to the policy effort.
You know, and then one which was, I think. Common sense, but probably is worthwhile, just reviewing the handbook. Um, you know, which, which represents really the policies around cell phone, social media. And either make an effort to make sure we're enforcing it. And I think in the high school is probably the, one of the most challenging areas where. You know, one, right? The teacher stops, makes it, it's harder for some and then the kids get used to it and use them up.
And I think that comes from the more simplicity we bring to it, the easier it is to, to follow, right? So I think there's probably something to that.
Yeah.
And, uh, and I, you know, we, we, we review the handbook every year and I actually don't remember the passages around. Cell phone news, the social media, but, um. You know, a lot of that, the, a lot of that is governed, uh, by state law. Uh, so for instance, any type of. Electronic or non-electronic incidents that happen outside of school that impact learning becomes part of school responsibility. I believe that's a good law. Um, and so then therefore, you know, the police can be involved in things like that. But again, that is more of a reactionary, uh, piece on that. How do we use our momentum, our, our new strategic plan aligned with. Plenty of things in the handbook to. Communicate a more simplistic plan around what to do so that it. Not difficult for teachers to remember, oh, can I use Twitter and not Facebook? Is it threads now or is it? Uh, so remove products, remove buzzwords out of it and get it right down to the, the meat of what we're trying to do. So.
You know, I, I shared that I spent a couple of years of that. Right? At least it's easy to enforce. But that, that's, I think, where it just gets so hard. So I, I thought that was, um, you know, helpful. Good to get a, um, pulse on that, but I think the handbook is probably the biggest one. And I, I think. Um, as you talk to the administration, it would be great if they come to ideas. You know, you know, Will, I thought you had a great comment. Oh, hey, sometimes it's good for me to know as a teacher. That the, um, yeah, school committee has my back.
That's where I was coming from when we had our, our workshop with technology, you know, encompass so many things, but just getting social media out of our schools. I mean, like, and, and that's like boiling it down. We said simple is easiest, but where I'm at, uh. So with, with my background, uh, being an educator, anything we can do to help teachers. Enforce no social media in school, I think is a good thing. Um, if it's in the handbook, great. What can we do to help our principals? I think it's really mostly at the high school level. And then the teachers know like. It is off, you know, that is the rule. So if there's any. You know, I know Leo, it's, it's a community effort, passive positive, but anything we can do to help it. Again, just from my daily life. Uh, what I see, you know, anyone who wants to research on this, it's an addiction, right? So our kids are addicted, so they are not spending time building relationships with their teachers and each other and putting time into their. Uh, academics, they are swiping for hours a day and anything we can do to help get that out to make our. High school teachers, but and, and the whole way down, high school teachers and administration to make their life easier. If we can do that from this seat, I'm, I'm all in.
But I think your point exactly is where. From, from the administration is to bring those teachers with those opinions, just like the experiences you've had.
Right.
You know, with the, the student with the AirPod in during class, having it like this, you know, not paying attention to you.
Uh, you know, trying to take it and the kid fights back.
Right.
Property. We know we're allowed to, but there's just, there's things as a teacher, you don't want to get in that screaming match in the middle of math class.
That's how.
Anything we can do to help that.
That's a perfect example of what exactly, how do we, what is the best way? To meet that, because that is going to be the difficult part. And I think you, you've been there as a head for me. Like, how do you? Get the students' staff together on that, right? And I think that's the part.
And it's family.
And the community, though, like you were saying earlier, yeah. If we as parents understand, let's take, I, I don't think, I, I would get, parents don't understand. Uh, how problematic it is or how much, like check your kid's screen time. I, I don't want to like, it sounds preachy. I, I'm. My kids are about to get there. I'm struggling with, with screen time, you know, with my own kids. So it's not that, but, but as an educator, that when I put that hat on. I, I, I think parents would not understand what a problem it is, just in distraction. Then we get to safety and belonging and bullying on there and all these things. And I don't think. We understand the significance of it as a community. So what we can do to partner up with the administration and parents and just set the tone that the. We understand the significance of it as a community, so what we can do to partner up with the administration and parents and just set the tone, that this is. You know, wherever we land, I'm I'm clear where I want, like, you know, but like, wherever we come out as a community administration, like, the rules for the phones. To not distract our kids in school.
I think that's the conversation to be had, you know, particularly at the six to twelve, you know, grades, like, just to hear it. Just to, and bring the teachers in, I just to hear exactly just how you put it. And and um and bring some parents in too, like, really, let's bring it as a as a community push.
Just, sorry, one, but to go full circle, we're talking about how it affects the kids, but that battle, um, that many of our teachers have been in. For a long time, like. It fatigues that, right? Like, we know teaching is tough, post-COVID teaching is really tough, with the state of. Affairs in our state country goal, it is tough. And if we could take that away, it would take stress off our teachers and they'd be better teachers for our kids.
Like, I I agree, so so that, you know, there may um be an opportunity, the student handbooks, I think typically come back to us in early September.
Oh, yes.
So, um, yeah, to me, the lesser evil is, i- if they were to get back to something that was. A a little more binary.
And like I said, I don't like leaving the tracks to be there, but listen and bring the intent to.
But that, you know, again, it's if that's just our word, it depends, if Will, I don't know if we hear that, you know, our teachers.
You know, the one particular teacher that hears it.
So then that was, that was a good conversation, if it if it come up, you know, a little twitchy end. We did review the overarching agendas and calendars, I think, again, just to see. Hey, what is the body of work we're trying to do during the year? Um, I think we can revisit a little bit with, uh, you know, that'll be, you have a new strategic plan. I, you know, it also shared process, you know, typically, again, Michelle and I work. You know, I'm trying to work with Dr. Mars on on that agenda. Um, I think one uh takeaway from that, though, was making an attempt to shift the public hearing in January. Um, Michelle, based on your your requests as well, so that, uh, as far as the the budget. We're not necessarily voting the same time as the public hearing. Um, I think we also have to recognize budgeting process, um, there's points and takes between us. And like warrant committees, and we have to be equal, I'm not saying that's a mandate.
Yeah, I wasn't, we wasn't there for that part of the conversation, but I would say that when you vote for the app at the public hearing. That's only accepting the budget as a school committee budget, it's not saying you're, the budget's what you want. It's just that we put it together, we're giving it to you, it's now your budget, now you do what you want with that, so it's not like. You're bound to that budget when you vote on it, as we know, it changes, you know, a zillion different times by time to time meeting, so it's not a. The end of January vote does not mean you have to go with that budget, in my seventeen years as superintendent, once. It's the one that was voted at the end of January, was the one in town, which is, it's never like that, it's always. Push and pull and conversations and additions, if we need additions or subtractions, if. The warrant committee wants us to subtract stuff, so it's not like you're bound to that, you vote on it in January, so again, I wasn't there for that part of the meeting, but.
So what, when would, when do, so I know it changes a lot, Jeff, but just for clarification, like, what? So we are voting to like, take it from your proposed proposal, that so then we own it, and then we kind of can tweak it.
You tell me what you want, whatever you did, and you can tweak it that way, yeah, but it's not like you're. What I present to you in that public hearing, that's not the end all be all the budget, it's going to change all throughout, but it's it's really just the transfer legally of. The superintendent's proposed budget to the school committee's now budget, that's all it was.
I think, so, given that I I'm the one sort of who's been pushing at those things, it's it's. Anything budget being one, but anything in which we are voting on as a committee. For which there is a public input forum hearing, call it. Um, just ensuring that there is an opportunity to get the public input. Process it, follow up on it before taking a voting action, that's really the ask I'm putting out there. Wasn't specific to budget, it was inclusive of any of those scenarios that, um, just so that it's, you know. If we hear something, right, as part of the the public forum, we want to maybe go have a follow-up conversation on or go and investigate further in some manner. I want to make sure we have the opportunity to do.
I I get that, but that's the superintendent's budget at that point, right?
Sure.
That's the one that we put together as a district, and if we get feedback on that. And that's your responsibility after that, be to go do all that, you know what I mean?
Like, I mean, the, what does the vote really do? We're just like, yeah, we take it now and then we'll do it, because that that's confusing to me, this.
The vote is, and then quickly if I'm wrong, Jeff, um. In my budget processes as well, generally, the budget that's being handed over is presented to us with increases and decreases that the. That Jeff would like to see for the district, on behalf of everyone's input, right, administration.
Yeah.
So in my case, when there was, you had to do a tech and I needed a full-time FTE uh to get on. Uh, you know, to help me with my tech work, I would go to superintendent, superintendent would propose it to the school committee and say, well. You don't get another tech, I'd rather another teacher, right? Well, you need another teacher before you get another tech, right? Or something along those lines. Um, so that's going to be put on a reserve. Like area two, it's never always such a stone, there's always like so much you can pay for. And what they're projecting they're paying for, and then there's the, if we can afford it underneath to like the wish list items. Now, my FTEs always ended up on wish list items. Despite whether it went after voted to us, then let's say we got a little bit more and we can start hitting those wish list items. Then it was up to school committee to say yes or no to my advancement, was that my head?
Yeah, yeah.
Or my position I wanted it there, or the line items I wanted, so.
Budget subcommittee, you know, at that point, would take a look at it and then they would go through, and if, you know, I. I recommend X amount of positions, you know, like, oh, we don't need that, we don't need that, that most positions, you guys say, take those up. But that doesn't happen until after you accept it at the public hearing, so it's not like. I guess I don't know what the the problem we're trying to solve, but that's what I'm trying to figure.
It's not budget specific, my mine is on anything for which we're opening up to public input that's going to influence the vote. Of whether or not, and so if what you're saying is that particular example is not one we're accepting the budget, great, maybe that's a non-issue. Um, I'm talking more, any of it, yeah, it wasn't budget specific in my ass.
Okay.
Yeah, it seems like it's not a problem with the budget, because we're just voting to take over the budget.
But I do think we need to be very clear about that at the point, you know, when, and maybe you guys have done that. When you vote, the vote is like, yes, we accept, uh, you know.
I mean, I I think I hear what you're saying, I guess, um. I mean, so, I mean, every, every public meeting is a hearing. Nobody here.
Designated as hearings, right, but we are required to have them, so I'm just.
Oh, okay, okay.
We can, you know.
Yep.
It's also, yeah.
I mean, if it's worth, if it's something we're having a hearing about, like. I mean, we've had other, we've had.
Like you'll have one on grid configuration at some point.
Yeah.
Things like that.
It'll be most are all.
Yeah, so, yeah, so.
So, so, yeah, no, and and I think part of the reason for that topic was just to kind of give you, give us sign a sense of the whole. Hey, this is how how we are operating. Um, I think we, you know, I continue to learn in this role of, you know, get here and. Constantly monitoring, again, feedback from both sides, saying, are we prepared to take something forward, because we can always. A choose not to vote, hey, let's hold off, I don't think we're ready, I've seen that happen quite a bit. And we can also, this, just like a um a red on a scorecard, a vote, the answer might be no, could be no, I want to revisit. You know.
Someone might need more information, we've definitely gone back.
There's been others where I've seen where we have chosen, like, I wasn't expecting necessarily to vote, and everyone said, well, we can vote, and I feel like, hey, that's good. And so, so I think it was a good, it is a good, uh, yeah, true topic, though, like, hey, this is why we voted. It helps us just. Get there.
Yeah, I think where you started to, this like the monthly agenda thing is super useful for a new member, um, to kind of get the flow of the year.
Yeah, I was, I remember that. I I agree, and we, um, I think you and Andrea also help typically kind of checking it. So that, um, unless there's anything else that was there, the strategic plan, I think we just covered. Um, one of the topics was dashboard, that's great to see an idea, what that may look like. Uh, and then the last topic was uh school tart, school start times, I think, um, if you were not there. At that point, but, you know, um, I think the expectation would be a superintendent task force would be formed in the. You know, September, October timeframe, and we'd love it if, um, and this would be, I think, a good idea with almost any task force. As we kick it off, give an outline of expectations, major milestones, and really targets for the task force. So that as, you know, we get through it, but kind of bring that back up. So the the, um, I think that was, there, I don't know if there's anything else on that. Yeah, I think that was pretty, yeah. Be good, and that, and just, just so I understand, so you you want to have a school community member as far as that goes for. Um, for the school start times.
Probably was. I think that's a good idea.
Of that, um, as I, you know, who that would be is, maybe August, September, figure out. Then the last topic was um bus fees, and I I I would say bus fees, I think, has come up once or twice a year, the year I've been here. Without action, I thought, um, I don't want to go off the agenda, because the agenda was bus fees, but like, oh, you you had a good point is. It might also, when you think about the the dollars that you might generate. Take a look at overarching these, right, I think, park, and I lobbying for increased parking, but. There has been CPI inflation.
Yeah, I'm not sure we looked at overarching these in probably four years, maybe five years.
Sorry.
I mean, we talked about technology, bus fees.
These already have, we haven't really looked like sports fees and all that, we haven't looked at that in a while. Four or five years. At least, before COVID, so at least four or five years.
Yeah, been a while. So I think maybe that we could put out as an agenda, I'd hope to, you know, if so, so we can go through that, so we could give you what fees we charge, how much we charge. And then show you what other places in our area charge.
With the bus, but with the other ones, I think it would help all this. Because I, how can you find all the money we share?
Okay, so I I hopefully, um, again, I don't mean to belabor, because we we talked for a while, but I'm just getting everybody aligned on that. Helps me. So I don't think, I think that was everything.
Maybe just, um, I I don't know if it's worth mentioning here, but um for for folks at home, um, who do like to look for. Needing minutes, um, and and our workshop minutes are part of that, there's a little bit of a backlog. Um, in getting the minutes, uh, due to a new clerk and staffing things, we just heard this.
That's not for us.
All right, never mind.
We're good.
Okay.
Yeah, we, this um, meeting at one point was going to be exclusively the strategic plan.
Okay.
And it it grew a little, a lot of the drumbeat.
Okay.
We're, we're doing okay, and I already just stopped on, yeah, we're up for the next meeting.
Okay. Sorry, we'll wait for this.
That was the workshop, any other items to do business?
So I do have another item that I wanted to tell you about, but I can probably do it during informational. Um, where we talked about the school safety and security enhancement grant, we got another grant, we notified of another grant that we did as part of. Um, it was eleven districts in Metro West, so the school bus electrification grant. Uh, we signed on to that with Needham, Adic, uh DS, a bunch of districts around us, Wellesley. Um, and we, we were notified that we were given the grant award, the grant, we don't know what that means yet, as far as like, you're going to get electric bus next year, we know that. So, uh, we just got the notification, uh, Michael was a part of that process as well, uh, with spearheaded a meeting that we signed on to, so it's kind of exciting. I'll have more information going forward, but, um, good news.
Yeah.
I get right into our solo panels.
I just have the vision of the electric, the Amazon.
I know.
Very quiet. Um, and I know we're coming off, um, SBC at a meeting tonight, right?
Yeah, 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 everything in one, in one night. So, yeah, so the school building committee, I I typed so that I wouldn't run rampant, um. Has been meeting to discuss the plan to replace current Dale Street School with a newer renovated elementary, um. Just want to make sure that in case people didn't hear it in that forum, they they hear it in this forum. Um, one of the first activities that the SBC embarked upon was uh the creation of a community-wide survey. Um, that, you know, would help establish some guideposts on the top priorities and considerations from the community, so. Um, this is important, because we want to understand where people's heads are, you know, what they care about, um, and what would potentially influence decisions we make in the next project. So, um, that survey, uh, is published now, the results of it, as well as a high-level summary are on the SBC website. So people should go there, um, if you're interested in seeing how people responded, there were over a thousand responses. The raw responses, and as I said, some summary slides are are there, um, so that, again, really helpful information to get the new SBC going. For everybody, just, I think everybody here knows, but in case anybody in the general public doesn't, so Michelle and I are the school committee appointees to the SBC. We attend the meetings, we participate in the process as a voice for the school committee. Um, Dr. Marsden is also present and available to help provide inputs, um, and also make sure that we're keeping the needs of our students and faculty. Uh, students and faculty at the top, um, in the forefront, um, but I do want to point out that Michelle and I are voting members of the SBC. Dr. Marsden is not, I felt the need to state that, because I think there's been some confusion about that and some of the comments that, um, came back in the surveys. So, to be clear, the members of the SBC, um, that are voting members are citizens of Medfield, taxpaying citizens. Uh, so just want to throw that up, appreciate you being there and participating, but as a non-voting member.
Thank you.
Um, so, yeah, so listen. You're welcome, just like, just like these meetings, the public is welcome, encouraged, please feel free to show up in person, um, in Zoom. Uh, with any other town committee, you can go online, you can sign up to to get alerts about activities that are happening with the committee, so I would encourage all of that. Um, the SBC will have a presence at Medfield Day, so still discussing. Um, the the details of that, but would encourage citizens who are walking around to just come over and talk to some of the committee members. Share thoughts, feelings, uh, you know, hear what's the latest at that point in the process. Um, and our next meeting is tentatively scheduled for August twenty first, so again, feel free to join for that if you are available. Um, we've got big decisions that need to be, uh, made around site selection, the size of our school, we're waiting to hear about MSBA funding. Um, but I want to also make it clear that project planning is moving forward without, you know, any decision on that, we're we're not on hold. Um, the committee is, committee is committed, the committee is committed, um, to making sure that we are, uh. Full steam ahead in making some big decisions and getting community input and and making this. Um, not that we're in some kind of a waiting mode, so I just want to make that clear to everybody. I'm excited, I think we've got a good group, I think it's a good mix of people with various viewpoints and backgrounds. Um, so it was not a party to the last group, I'm sure they were great too, but I do think we have a a good committee. Um, everyone's got a common goal, and it is my hope, um, that together as a committee and a community. That we are going to find the compromises where we need to, so that we can get our kids the right school, right place, the right cost as soon as possible. So, that is my update.
Thank you, uh, we just add that, um, it was great tonight to hear that, uh, the voting members of the, uh. Of the school building committee were very supportive of MSBA, so that was great to hear, everyone that was there tonight was very supportive. Um, I'm glad you asked that question, because that's really important to, to see where people stand on that issue, right, because if. If we do get accepted in MSBA, it's a lot of money there, and there is a process and there are guardrails, and you have to say that, but. To hear everyone, uh, in full support of MSBA tonight was really great, so thank you for asking that question.
Yeah, I think we get to, you know, everyone needs to be bought in, and the pros and cons, and nothing's perfect, but, you know, the the pros outweigh the cons, and I. And he's good to make sure we understand where people's heads are, to see if we've got another decision that comes up or not.
We'd have at least leading indicators in the next thirty days or so, I I, if you're in contention, I assume. You may ask more diligence, or you may, right, if you don't hear anything, yeah, and I think what they are, so they, when they, uh, know they're.
Let us in, last time, they came and visited Dale Street over the summer, so they're fully aware of what Dale Street's like, so they, they know what in the school. They don't need to establish, reestablish that at all, just whether or not, you know, we fit into their financial plan based on what school they're being asked for statewide. So I think that's what it is, they, they know we need to school, for sure.
The the other question, and and we can, um, brainstorm a little bit, as, um, Shell, but. How, is there anything? How, is there anything we can do to help? Right, like, as as a school committee, um, I think about. Um, you know, accountability. It's to who's doing what, right, you're asking for a school. Where, you know, we can provide information. And and continue, but I think you're saying, you know, the committee is committed. You're making some big decisions, I kind of, I'm trying to say, okay, like, what and when.
So the.
And and you know, and it might not be, maybe you guys, or maybe we need to talk to. Uh, some of the others as to, okay, what is that project plan? High level, what are some of the decision points? Why are you asking that question?
Yeah, so, um, that's one of the things that we've been pushing as a committee, which is we need to have a documented project plan that shows all the decision gates. So everybody's clear about, you know, what information we need, from whom, when. Um, and obviously, if there are like dependencies on other things, one of the things that we did talk about tonight and looking at the last. Process, I guess, if you will, um, was that some of those pieces like site selection, like grade configuration. Um, they they can be parallel path, we should be, uh, we can be and should be talking about them now. So, um, Dr. Marsden, Michelle and myself have had a conversation, I think we're gonna probably need to have a follow up conversation. I think what this committee owes the S B C. Is what we feel we need in terms of the size of a of a school. And I think we need to definitively, you know, put ourselves behind that kind of a figure. Um, I think that, you know. I I rec- I recognize that that has been done to some extent, but.
Most specifically around the size. If you say so is.
Well, I'm thinking about students, so how many, how much space do we need for the number of students, which will then have a direct impact on the size building? And the cost of said building, so given the conversations before where there was, you know. Is it three grade, is it two grade, and sort of getting back to the commentary of, it's really like, how many students do we feel we need to basically support? And build a home for, and there's probably a spectrum of what we would say would be like. Minimal, don't go there, it's gonna outgrow itself in a week. And then there's a fifty year plan. Neither of those are gonna work, so I think it's it's kind of coming to what's in that like reasonable window of. Given the estimates on enrollment and given projections, taking those with. You know, historical understanding of that and the ebbs and flows, and coming up with a very real. Figure and ask that we can put to the S B C and say, this is, this is the ask. I do, I do think we wanna close out on that sooner rather than later, and we can bring that. You know, back to this group for additional discussion, you know, as well.
Is that, you're going off the previous feasibility study that, if M S B A does have a type of process. You will be going through that process, they were going to come tell you. I I mean.
Sure, if we get back in M S B A, they will do that, but I think one of the parameters, I don't know exactly what the language was, but I I thought that. At town meeting. Uh, there was a requirement for the S B C to have an independent enrollment evaluation.
Oh, yes, it was.
I thought there was.
Yeah.
On town meeting floor that was added, so I think that might be something that we look at, but.
Yeah.
We can do that sooner rather than later, that's something we can look at this fall.
Right.
That was to do that, cuz we just, they just take all of our data.
Yeah.
You know, go through that, so there's markets to do all that stuff.
I mean, they did it, but we had them go back to their projection same time, right, the time, yes, we had them go back, uh, again.
I would add when we're looking, you know, we talked about grade configuration, I think there is that, um, you know, that mental model of like. Two grades, that size. I think it would. I think it's important for us, isn't like this committee, to think about. All five schools where we have challenges. And just try to think holistically of like, can we do anything, can we make an ask to the S B C that would, um, benefit? Outside of just a two grade system, and I'm saying that like, we're thinking about things like, what do we know about a campus model that is beneficial? What do we know right now that we are going to be, it sounds like, on the hook? Every year for additional space at Memorial, if we're building a Dale, is it possible to do something like Robert Worth's school did, where they added like a wing? For free for, for free day, right, like, for, um. Like, is it possible to have those kind of, I guess, like, not so much like outside the box, like, out there, but like, other. Creative ways to solve maybe some of the other problems we're having right now, instead of just being so focused on. Dale, cuz we recognize that there are other challenges with some of our other other elementary schools. And I get, I understand everything at the end of the day is gonna come at a cost, but I think our job is to say. This is actually what we're looking at, like, yes, right now Dale's falling apart, but hey, Memorial struggled every year. And if they could have X amount of extra classrooms, or we could move the preschool out of the building completely somehow, or. You know, just kind of those.
Pretty long of a two, you know.
Yeah, I know. So this is what I was looking for, was the key action of explore implementing full day kindergarten for all, right? So there's obviously now a relationship between that and whatever ask we would be thinking, so.
I would say in the, other, the N F D A projects have done, uh, nine, they. You can't get creative, I would say the most creative one was Sharon. Uh, they did the middle school, but. Negotiated the. Fraction of the school that became the admin office and the early childhood wing. Was not M S B A in reverse, but was part of the project. Right, and they had it come up with a fraction of that was. So that was, and so now the early children centers is there underneath the administration and the rest of the school, the middle school. Uh, and it's a separate, separate wing, but if you ever had to, like, if the population are too big. They made it classroom sizes that they put offices and stuff in, so you could renovate it, turn it to middle school classrooms, you had to. Do that kind of stuff. And I, I think you guys read on, I think it'd be awesome to have a whole different one, feasibility study that look at all the schools. Be great. I'm in full support of that.
Yeah, so, um, you know, I I do think it's, it's just me, and I wanna see it play out, it it might be worthwhile, I think. In the fall that we get S B C school committee and select board maybe together. We, you know, we would do that once or twice a year. In the prior one, it's a forcing function for the S B C to say, hey, let's report. Where we are, and I do, I I think about accountability. Um, we all. You know, you know, this, this one, one. Sort of get the support and I like the yes vote. I constantly think about what are the barriers to that, and that's where some of that, um, you know, early childhood. Might be a barrier, I also even think about the the, um, public record. Building like that, you have there's space there in that campus, if you're thinking about a campus model, then maybe you can pre-purpose. Solves some other problems. Um, it is a tricky one. You know, the S B C is out there trying to help with the Dale, right, you know. But but those other factors, you can be thoughtful about it, make a difference, so, you know, that might be a good. Ask. To the S B C, but maybe. It'd be October, realistically. Um, okay, but I think it's good, good progress, great, great update. On that, it's been a little while, it was a little longer update, but it, I think it's.
More.
Uh, you know, I think it was thorough. Excuse me.
For all those listening.
Yeah. Great. Um, I think the uh informational items.
Sure, so we were really happy to be one of forty two school districts in the state to, uh, receive the public safety offices, um. Uh, save schools and communities initiatives, so that was really great, I mean, um, Owen spearheaded this. Uh, he had come to me, uh, I think late. Late winter, early spring, like February, right around there sometime, February, March, and. Um, you know, I sat down and looked at it, he put together the grant and we, we got a certification. At the end of June, so just really excited to give forty three thousand nine hundred sixty seven dollars. Um, and federal funding for safe schools, and we, you know, I put in your materials, there's a. A guideline that they had, what they would pay for, what they wouldn't pay for, so we're looking at. Um, revamping the alarm system in this building, which is really antiquated and. In really not, uh, great for us, so redo that whole thing. And then looking at adding additional cameras in elementary schools, uh, both perimeter, uh. Just make sure they're in the perimeter and so that all the areas are covered in elementary school, which we currently don't have right now, so. Um, something that we're, we're excited about and a great way to, uh, spend someone's federal money for us, and again, only forty two districts got it, so that's great. Well, thank you all.
Congrats, so I think so.
Looking forward to. Getting all this together. Hopefully, when we call. That's all I have, it's true.
No, it's great. Yeah, so I think, um, next meeting, we have, um, Thursday would be an executive session. Like, but Thursday at nine thirty, which I believe was posted.
It was.
And then right now, um. We were showing August twenty fourth, I I have a conflict that week. I can be dialing in, but I'd be on Nantucket, keep it coming up.
I'd be coming up.
Down here, yeah. In Hampshire, so we wanted to see, um, and I forget I texted, but do we have flexibility to move that to the twenty eight?
It's fine, for me.
Works for me.
That opening day, is that your first day with T J?
Is there anything that happens then that you?
It is, that's my, we'll be able to work on.
Um, actually, one question, and maybe I should, it's, um, the only thing that we might have to do is the letter. Or or.
Right. Right, so maybe, I don't know how. How you wanna do that, um.
I'm talking, I'm sorry, the letter within the strategic plan, so there might be an ad hoc meeting that we can pass forward.
Sure.
Cuz I I I haven't totally processed that.
Yeah.
Other than that, there's nothing, it's no reason we have to do it before.
No, in fact, we'll have the handbooks, everything ready for twenty eighth, so it'd be great, I mean, the nice thing is there is electronic now. Back in the day, when you had to actually print all the handbooks to give them out, it was kind of a problem, if, you know, you guys wanna make different. Choices or or changes in the handbook, so this allows us to, I think last year we changed some things, we just get right on there, change it, repost it, that's fine, so. So, when do we get the handbook done, if we're proving it back to like the cycle of things?
Yeah, you'd get it a week before.
The week before, okay.
You can go look and see what's on there now, too.
What's that?
If you can go look right now and see the.
Yeah, it's a final major changes.
You shouldn't, you know, but I think we're gonna look at what you suggested.
Stuff.
Yeah, you have the safety stuff, I already had it there.
Okay.
Blosser.
Blosser.
Safety.
That'd be very popular at the retreat.
Okay, I think, um, we're good. That's, and we'll have students probably in September, right, over, yeah, or in, you know, probably in September. And, uh, other than that, I, um. Look, anybody wanna motion to adjourn this meeting?
So moved.
Second, Michelle.
Michelle, all in favor.
I. Roll call.
I will call tonight, I.